At this time, Commissioner McCoy is going to lead us in a prayer and Commissioner Newton with the pledge, so please stand.
Pray. Heavenly Father, we ask wisdom and guidance in this county. Help us to make decisions for the future that we need to make. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, hello. What happened to the crowd? Good Lord. If we have any active military or veterans or first responders or law enforcement in the room, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you for your service. All right. At this point, we're going to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Unless, are there any changes, Mr. Management?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote as unanimous. Thank you. Now, there's some folks in the room waiting on this one. We're getting ready to swear in our new clerk to the board. So before we do that, are there any, any of the commissioners have any comments they want to make, or if not, we're going to head on over and take care of the oath. All right?
Good to go.
Want me to go to the podium?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind.
Okay. Tara Klein is our new clerk, and I think some of her family's going to come up and... You read? Okay. Just hold up your right hand. I, your name,
Tara Klein.
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
the Constitution and laws of the United States
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
and that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
the duties of my office as clerk
The duties of my office as clerk.
to the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
To the Pender County Board of Commissioners.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations.
Like I said, I really appreciate the work Nancy did on
Absolutely.
Phil and Nancy did a brilliant job. I appreciate.
Absolutely.
She's not going anywhere quite yet either. She thinks she is, but not.
Okay. Well, welcome, Tara. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate your help. And I know Mr. McCoy just said something about Nancy. I echo that. She's been a, we lucked up. So thank you, Nancy. And I understand you're going to be here for a little while. Okay.
He's the boss. That's over. Yeah. She's not going anywhere quite yet.
All right. All right. Next item on the public information is the presentation of our fiscal year 2020 audit report. Meg.
Good afternoon. Meg Blue, Pender County Finance Director. For those who don't know, today I have with me Robert Bittner from, originally from RSM, now from PB Mayor's, here to present our 2020 audit report. And then there, you have a copy of the report, the letter that goes along with it, and then the presentation inside of your, inside of your report.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Chairman. Hope everybody's doing well today. Nice, beautiful August day here in eastern North Carolina. So as Meg said, my name is Robbie Bittner. I'm a partner with PB Mayor's. Y'all are probably wondering what PB Mayor's is. The RSM offices in Morehead City and New Bern, North Carolina, were purchased by PB Mayor's as of December 1st, 2020, at which time all the assets and client bases from our offices moved from RSM over to PB Mayor's. PB Mayor's is a top 100 accounting firm in the country, ranking in the seventies in revenues. Morehead City and New Bern make the 11th and 12th offices of this firm. And to make things a little bit easier from a transition perspective, we are a full RSM Alliance member, which means that our audit methodologies, practices, and policies are practically identical to those of RSM. We actually subscribe to their, to their work. So from a perspective of how we perform an audit, it is really no different than that of how we would have done it under RSM. Start off with your financial statements. You have a nice, short, short, easy read right here, about 170 pages worth. It's made up of five major sections. You have your management discussion and analysis. Then you have your government-wide financial statements, which is really the summary, most summarized set of statements that you have. Then you move there. From there, you have the fund financial statements, which break it down by your major funds and by groups between your governmental funds and your business-type funds. Then you have your notes to the financial statements, which really then start to get into the meat and potatoes of what's, what's being presented in those funds. And then you have required supplementary information, and then after that supplementary information, which breaks down those non-major funds a little bit more. At the end of June 30th, 2020, Pender County had approximately 30 different funds that they were operating in. So what are we, what are we here for? As auditors, we're charged with rendering an opinion on the financial statements as to whether or not they are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP. With that, there's four types of opinions we can issue. We can issue an adverse, which is where we believe that your financial statements are not fairly presented in accordance with GAAP. We can disclaim an opinion, which means that we did not see enough information to even render opinion one way or the other. We can issue a qualified opinion. This is where we believe that you have fairly presented your financial statements in accordance with GAAP, except for maybe one or two parts. And then the last and highest level of assurance that we can provide as external auditors is an unmodified or clean opinion, which the county did receive this year. So go, first thing we'll start with is sort of, sort of working front to back, just a couple of quick financial results from 2020 and some comparison to other counties, like counties and similar in size. As you can see here, I'm not going to spend too much time on this, but just general fund revenues overall. Abhorrent taxes clearly your highest source of revenue, followed by intergovernmental, which is a lot of your grants, sales taxes, and stuff of that nature. As you can see, over the past four years, this really hasn't changed too much year over year. And as it comes to, from a tax perspective compared to your similar-sized and the statewide counties, you are a little bit higher, but overall, I mean, it looks, it looks a lot worse than it really is, but it's really only four cents on the hundred-dollar value there. So, and these comparison numbers are as of 2020. From there, we'll go to kind of the percentage of property tax collected. Was, was rolling around the 98%. 2020 dropped 96. Obviously, COVID had a lot to do with that. That's a trend you've seen throughout the state, different municipalities of all shapes and sizes. The similar size, as you can see statewide, similar size, you're still below the average. However, that average has come down almost in a percentage point from 20, from 2019 to 2020. So just to give you a comparison there. On the expenditure side, as with most counties, the, one of the highest expenditures is, is education, followed then by, typically by public safety. So you're following right well within those trends. Growth of expenditures, public safety, we had the drop-off in 2020. Part of that is going to be a major issue as it relates to the FEMA stuff that came through during the time in 19. Fund balance, general fund fund balance was steadily creeping up, dipped a little bit in 2020. I wouldn't say it's anything to, nothing that stands out is really concerning from an auditor's perspective. Typically, that usually means that you've done something to purchase some assets or something of that nature that pulls it out of fund balance and puts it at the government-wide level in that position. So from there, this gives you the breakdown of the fund balances out there. That largest piece there is the unassigned, which means we have that as available. The other large item on there is related to stabilization by state statute. This is just a calculation that the state indicates that your appropriations can't be more than the cash you have on hand at that point in time. So they require it to be restricted at year-end. However, it's kind of a misnumber, and that, that really is there for you to spend. It's just not in that super liquid form. Next, as fund balance is a percentage of general fund net expenditure, this kind of gauges, okay, how much can we operate next year? Yes, sir?
So the, go back, please. I believe the stabilization is to make sure that we're not using the fund balance for daily operations. Is that not the purpose of that stabilization? In other words, in order, in order to maintain a certain balance in there for catastrophic events, that state statute, is that not right, Trey?
That's, that's not entirely the premise behind that stabilization by state statute. It's literally a, it's a simple, you just cannot, it's a simple calculation of you cannot appropriate more expenditures than you have cash and liquid assets on hand for the most part. So it's basically stating that of your fund balance, don't spend this piece right now, and don't appropriate this piece in the next year.
We've always gone above and beyond the minimum because we're in, after we have to pull out for hurricanes, and had we not done that, we'd have been in a world of hurt in Florence.
Yeah, we're well above the minimum. I just want to make sure I understood what that 13 million is about.
Yeah. It's, it's a general, general statute 159, simple calculation. The LGC actually provides a, a template for how to calculate this at both the, at every individual annual fund level, from a special revenue fund to general fund. So, but in any case, that's where that, that number comes from. But nothing here, again, that would jump out from an auditor's perspective of like, oh, wow, there's a big red flag here or anything of that nature. Is that, yes, sir?
I'm good.
Okay, back to fund balance, the percentage of net expenditures. This is really saying how much, how much fund balance do you have to operate next year if you collected nothing? So as you can see, the county's got about 31% in fund balance of their next year's expenditures. Statewide runs about 30, 34, 35%. Similar size, a little higher. Typically, what you see here is the larger the municipality, the smaller that percentage is, because those dollar numbers just get huge. But I would expect after some of the FEMA funds come in this year that this number will increase for 2021.
Robbie, that number does not reflect the eight million, Meg? That that number does not reflect the recent eight million dollar payment from Pender.
Correct. Now, that would be deferred at the fund level. So. So after, one of the other things we're required to do outside of the rendering our opinion on, on the financial statements, in accordance with government auditing standards, we're required to issue a report on internal control and compliance with laws, regulations, grants, and contracts. As we, this is something that we are supposed to look at as we are performing our audit, and things that we see there, and we do design certain tests to look at these items. And then on top of that, we also issue an opinion on your compliance with federal and state grants in accordance with the Uniform Guidance at the federal level and State Single Audit Implementation Act, as well as would report any internal control material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we would note during the course of those audits. So I'll kind of stop there and give you a quick definition. So material weakness in internal control is a weakness that either has or has the ability to cause a material misstatement, or in the case of compliance, material non-compliance in the financial statements. A significant deficiency, while not as severe as a material weakness, it rises to the level that it should be communicated to those charged with governance, thus the board. Therefore, anything that would be there would be reported in the financial statements in that compliance section. And then the lowest level that you have is just a simple control deficiency. These items are just a lot of times items that are noted during the course of an audit. They're either presented in a management letter, or many times they can be communicated verbally as well to management, and they don't, they would be considered immaterial. So. When it comes to compliance this year, related to the federal uniform guidance and our audit in accordance with that uniform guidance, we had an unmodified opinion on all major federal and state programs, except for the Medicaid program, Medicaid program's eligibility determination function. In this, we noted several instances of ineligible folks receiving benefits and, and a litany of errors as it came to input of information. And therefore, we had a material weakness in internal, in internal control related to eligibility determination, as well as a qualified opinion on that Medicaid eligibility determination function.
So we've had this before, and I, I guess I, I don't understand. We don't have, we either, we got to offer everything that we, we think that people are qualified to receive, and then based on what the information they supply, we, we award them based on the information that they supply.
Correct. So the information.
So every year, we keep getting hit with the same finding every year. And either we, we, we give, we give benefits to people that, in your opinion, aren't qualified for them, or we get hit on the other side that we don't give benefits to people that are qualified for them. I don't know how, I don't know how to win on this one. I mean, we've, we've seen it every year that I've been in office.
So I will say with this, this particular finding is very much a lag finding. And then let me explain that in a minute. So what we're required to test from a Medicaid eligibility perspective is claims. So we are given a list of claims from the state in which we select a sample from. That claim, we can trace that person's claim back to when their eligibility function, their eligibility was determined. There are cases where their eligibility could have been determined 11 to 12 months prior to that claim. If that claim had have been in July of 2019, it could have been late July of 2018 when that determination was made, and that would show up as a ineligible benefit in 2020 if we found it there. So it really can lag. So if you've done a lot of work to get it, to get it better, it will take it, it could take it a couple of years to really show. So just, just be cognizant of that, that this is very much a lagging indicator.
So, so do, are we, will we submit a corrective action report, either A to you, or will this trigger us needing to send a correction action report to the,
LGC.
to the LGC or both?
So there's a corrective act, corrective action plan that's already been submitted that's included in the, in the compliance section of the financial statements. And the DSS has already, they require us to provide a very detailed Excel sheet of every little tiny finding that you find, be it administrative in nature every little tiny finding that you find, be it administrative in nature, or be it that it resulted in an eligibility determination error. And that has already been provided to the state at this point. Now, I can't promise that the state won't come back and ask for something else because it's, it's in their purview to do that. However, the management and the DSS management have already provided us with a corrective action plan as it relates to this. Again, this was a repeat finding from last year. However, I will say, it seems like it could be getting a little bit better, and there's definitely more control showing up over there, but because of how this lags, I, I do feel that, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing some, some things that hasn't been presented at this point. Any other questions?
How, how many other counties experienced the same thing with this? I mean, do you have an idea, I mean, are we in a boat by ourselves here, or are we in a boat with others?
You're in a boat with a lot of others. There's, while, while I cannot say for sure who has a qualified opinion, our, our firm or our previous firm, as we were previously, we've not audited any county's Medicaid system without a, without a material weakness in this determination function in the past four or five years. So?
And that's to my point. It seems like that the, there's something that needs to be tweaked in the overall process to get us out of this continuous finding because we, we can't, we can't win. We either give, give benefits to people that aren't qualified as determined after the fact, or we don't give benefits to people that need them, that are qualified. And I'd rather err on the side that we're erring on quite personally, but, I mean, seriously. But it seems like a process problem to me, especially if it's, if it's rampant across the state.
It's, it's, the determination function is, it's quite robust, and it's a lot of if not this, then this, if not this, then this, if not this, then this. And it's also very easy to, in, in the NCFAST system, to, if you key something ever so slightly wrong, it shows up as an input error, and that's where I'm saying that I can't say how many people have gotten a qualified opinion because those errors don't always lead to an ineligible case. You may have, you know, you could have 50 errors, and just by luck and draw, none of those actually led to an ineligible, ineligible person receiving benefits based on how all the programs work. But if you end up with three or four that do, then you're in a position where statistically it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to test up to 270 cases to get to a point where you would have an unmodified opinion in that area. And that would be if you tested all of those additionals and found no other errors.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions there? I, I can say that all of the other programs that the county operates, we've not had any errors that we've found, so feel, feel confident there. As it relates to the financial statements as a whole, and in our report on internal control and compliance in accordance with government auditing standards, we did have two findings this year, material noncompliance and material weakness related to budget violations. There were a couple of funds that were over expended budget, and in accordance with GS-159, there has to be sufficient budget to have appropriations in some funds, and there were three funds that did not have sufficient appropriations within them. The second, this, that was a repeat finding, as well as 20, 2002 related to year-end closeout, internal control, material weakness there, that is also a repeat finding from the 2019 audit.
Can you tell us up hand the material noncompliance, what budgets?
What funds they were?
Yes.
I can. Fire EMS, it was. Fire EMS 911, there, it's in, it is in note one of the financial statements. I'll find that page for you. Be glad to, be glad to let you know what page that's on to give you those. Here it is, right here. Yep. Fire Service District Fund, Reevaluation Fund, and the 911 Emergency Systems Fund. So the three, those three funds, and that is on page 46 of the financial statements.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions here? We've already talked about the material, material weakness and noncompliance. It's reported here twice, but it's really the same thing because there's a state portion of that Medicaid as well as the federal portion. So if you, if you look in the scheduled findings and question costs in the back of the compliance section, the 2020, 2004 literally just references 2020, 2004, or 2020, 003 for that finding. And I've got this here, questions, I do want to mention a few other things to you coming down the pipe that the board just needs to be, needs to be aware of. First one being the implementations of GASB 87 and 96. GASB 87 was issued several years back. COVID gave us a little bit of a reprieve on when it was going to be, have to be implemented, but it will need to be implemented as of the end of '22. And that is a, could be a very large time undertaking for folks, so just be aware of that. And what that is, is related to leases, whereas a lot of operating leases, anything that operate, that was in agreement for more than a year is now going to have to have an asset and a liability on the books related to it, no matter if it was previously considered an operating lease. And 96 sort of jumps on the back of that as it relates to long-term EIT leases. So for example, you get a cloud-based ERP system that you get into for a five-year agreement, it's no longer an operating cost, it's now a capital item that has to go through the capitalization policies under, under GASB 87 and 96. So just something to be aware of as you go forward. Another thing, in the current year, the, for the uniform guidance testing that'll need to occur for fiscal '21, the OMB has released the 2021 compliance supplement. However, they have already said that there will be two addenda coming out related to those, so there could be several programs that the county is involved in that your incoming auditors may not have the ability to even test until that information comes out. So just to be aware of that. The last one is for the 2021 audit reporting period. The LGC had the Administrative Code of the State amended related to the presentation items that will need to come forth before the commissioners. First one being that you will be, there will be required in open session to be a presentation of the audit within 45 days of the issuance. The second piece is that there will be potentially 30 to 35 different metrics that the LGC has come up with. Apparently, these are things that they have always gauged municipalities and counties by, that are just now going to be letting it known to the rest of us what those things are, and there will be ratings, be it green, yellow, or red, and those items will be based on the items that are in the financial statements at the end of the year as it relates to the areas where the LGC believes that municipalities or counties should be. And if you are in the red, it's going to require a formal response from the board to the LGC for each one of those items that would show up in red. Why do I bring this up? Because the presentations will be getting longer from an audit perspective, just because there's, there's going to be 30, 30 to 35 different metrics that will be required to report. So just to let you know. With that, that kind of covers the financial statements as a whole. With you here, you also have what we call the AUC 260 letter, the communication letter. Feel free to flip through this. This has the summary of our recorded audit adjustments, any uncorrected misstatements, which there were none in the current year, just one carry forward from prior year, and then just the, a breakdown of the accounting estimates that are used in the financial statements and that sort of thing. So with that, be happy to answer any questions, any comments, concerns, from anyone on board.
All in all, it's a pretty good audit, but you would like to be able to limit some of these dings, especially if they've happened a couple of years in a row, but maybe as you're saying, we'll get rid of some of the lags and it'll, it'll stop, but.
Yes, sir.
It is tricky when you're trying to qualify folks for benefits, and you've got to hope everything they're telling you is the way it is.
Well, that and the goalpost moved.
Yeah, yeah, the goalpost did move. So, you know, all in all, I'm still happy with the audit, but you'd like not to have any kind of dings on it because we got the highest opinion we could give it financially, but.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Robbie. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any signups for public comment, Mr. Attorney?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda then, if everyone's had a chance to look at it. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I would like to pull item 7.2.
Okay, all right, we're so.
I make a motion to pull it.
Well, you want to discuss it?
I do.
Okay, well, we can, we can go ahead and approve the rest of the consent agenda except item 7.2.
Yes.
Okay.
You agree with that? Remove second.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'll second it, ma'am.
All right, all those in favor? Vote as unanimous, thank you, all right? Commissioner, you want to discuss that?
Yes, my question is simply this, do, in, in terms of the health department professionals, Ms. Moser, do we contract for doctors and other professional personnel?
We have several contracts, the pharmacist, vets, et cetera.
And the dentist on the mobile dental unit has been heretofore a contract person?
She has.
Okay. So what are the liability issues associated with having a professional healthcare provider, such as a dentist, become an employee?
Liability?
Yes. Do we have to provide their professional insurance coverage?
We already do that. It's no extra cost to us. We have a standard plan that covers not just employees, but contractors, volunteers, et cetera, so they're already covered with malpractice.
So bringing a dentist for the dental unit, which is an important program for the children of our county?
Absolutely.
And I don't mean to imply otherwise, but how, what is the additional cost associated with bringing that person on as an employee in terms of benefits, in terms of what we would have to pay incidentally to their salary? And I don't need a breakdown, but I'm just talking percentage-wise.
Roughly about 30%.
30% is the taxes and the employee taxes and benefits?
Oh, makes them 40 to 45%.
Okay. What is the, what is the purpose of transferring what had been heretofore a contract employee to a government employee in term, rather than a contract employee?
We haven't done that.
That's not what this is about.
Okay. A budgeting amendment to Department of Revenue's expenditures for dental services. Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the item that was on the last calendar that we had pulled.
Right, right.
That was my issue. Are, are we still going to try to move forward with that, given the increase in costs, or?
No. We did the RFQ process, and bids were opened, and Dr. Barnes was the only bid, but she's the most qualified certainly too, and so, yeah, we followed all the procurement steps for a contract.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moser.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, having heard that, I'd make a motion to approve item 7.2.
Second. Have a motion, a second, all those in favor. Vote as unanimous, thank you, folks. And we're going to move on to approvals and resolutions, first one being approval of a purchase order to Piedmont Truck Center. Mr. Colan?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Anthony Colon, Pender County Utilities Assistant Director. I'm here today to ask for the approval of a purchase order to Piedmont Truck Center of Greensboro for the total of $80,305.90. This vehicle is to replace our 2011 Ford F-350 truck with a crane, a 4,000-pound crane, known as the Crane Truck. The vehicle right now has a total of 297,733 miles. The body is quite deteriorated, and it's been very difficult to handle weight, as well as the parts to perform maintenance on the crane is no longer available. The Pender County Fleet Maintenance Staff and some of the local repair shops in the county has a frantic concern with acquiring parts to perform this maintenance. I got with me Mr. James Proctor, who's the Water and Sewer Superintendent, and James and myself, we worked together on putting in specifications and acquiring quotes for this vehicle. We received a total of five quotes for this replacement. Two of those vendors were local vendors, and then we have two vendors that were out. We had a Piedmont Truck, Fairway Ford, Chrysler, Dusche High Pond, Waiske Chevrolet Overgo, and Bill Corona Town of Wallace. The best pricing came out from Piedmont Truck Center. I attached the bids to your package, and I'm here right now asking for the approval of that purchase order so that we can acquire. Yes, sir?
I was just going to say, I mean, you did pretty good to find the truck right now. When can we get it?
Okay.
Is that a whole nother meeting?
So what's happening right now, you're absolutely correct, sir. The truck is not available right away, but you have to put your name on the list.
I understand.
So as soon as the vehicle become available, we can, we can obtain the vehicle. And we're also recommending the vehicle that we have right now to be reassigned to the water and sewer treatment plant. That vehicle can be of good use for them to be used to pick up some of the valves and stuff that they have involved on their ground. It won't be on the road, it will only be moving from one plant to the other one, but of course, that would be with your approval.
All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor. Vote as unanimous, thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
I appreciate you guys repurposing it for lighter duty use. I mean, that's good, absolutely, won't be getting a lot of miles on it, so.
Okay, next item, approval of purchase order for South Data Mailing Print Vendor. Mr. Pound?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Pound, Pender County Tax Office. This is the annual purchase order request for all of the mailing items that we do for tax purposes, your bills, notices, collection notices. South Data is our print vendor that we use to print those, and that's our vendor for this year. This is the end of their three-year contract, so after this year that we got for our three-year bidding.
And this was a budgeted item, right?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all those in favor. Vote as unanimous, thank you, Mr. Pound. Okay, next item, approval of a purchase order to Fairway Ford. Mr. Stewart? How are you doing?
I'm good, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, hope you all are well. So I'm seeking approval for the purchase order to purchase four vehicles for the amount of $98,972 to replace four existing vehicles.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. Is this purchase price includes?
I do. Um, is this purchase price inclusive of trade-ins or what are we doing with the old vehicles that we're replacing?
So, trade-ins we don't do, and so we offer them back up to either use for other departments. Although, most of these vehicles that we're replacing have some mechanical difficulties that might not make them very roadworthy. I have several vehicles that are, that are too expensive to, to fix, basically.
Are these going into Doug's or Allen's surplus inventory? Who's, who?
Who gets that pleasure?
If they're mechanically unsound, we'll, um, surplus and sell them.
So what if they're not mechanically unsound? What are we doing?
A lot of times we will repurpose them to another department. Um, the, the, the challenge with Wes's department is a lot of these vehicles are on the road after hours, late with children possibly in, in custody of employees, so we need a reliable vehicle. Otherwise, it could be put in an apartment that's driven, you know, middle of the day, eight to five. But if there's not a need, which I think all the vehicle needs are covered, we would, we would surplus the vehicle.
Even if they're mechanically sound, we'll surplus them?
If, if there's not a need for it, we would surplus itself.
Well, as a general rule, do we ever trade in vehicles?
Um, I'm trying to think.
To do it earlier?
Circumstances where we traded vehicles in.
Not before. Just depends on the vehicle early.
And condition. Most times we, we, um, put them on gov deals and sell them that way.
Any of these vehicles, um, are we getting any kind of help from the federal government or state on any of them?
Yeah, so we'll get about roughly fifty percent reimbursement on these vehicles.
Because I know we run into issues on that. We were talking, at one time I was thinking, you just do anything we want to with them, but there are some requirements with these vehicles that the feds help pay for.
That's correct. So, and this is one of the things that we've talked about on a number of occasions that, i- if we were to go to a motor pool type thing, that if any other department were to use these vehicles, that, that would have to be deducted back out. So, it, and that would include any maintenance, any, anything to do with that vehicle would have to be deducted back out.
So we're getting about fifty percent help from the feds on these vehicles?
Yes, sir.
So instead of spending a hundred thousand, we're spending fifty thousand on four vehicles?
Eventually, yeah.
Once we get the reimbursement, I guess.
That's correct.
So we'll be reimbursed the forty-five thousand of the ninety that you want for the four vehicles?
Give or take a little bit. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's good, as much as possible, doing business with our local car dealers in the county. They pay taxes here, so I think it's good that we could do it. Sometime you can't, I know you can't buy a vehicle, but as much as possible, we do it as supportably with our local businesses.
Fairway Ford has been, they, they've been very good to us over the years. I, I mean, we've, we've.
Yeah.
To the best of my knowledge, we've not purchased any vehicle since I, in my five years, that didn't come from Fairway, for the, for my department.
All right, sounds good. Any, um, any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote as unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay, next item, offer on surplus property. Mr. Manager, you want to lead us into that one?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a, um, an offer that we've received on a piece of property that is off Sluke Point Loop Road, has a minimum value of fifteen thousand dollars. There's no improvements to the property. And the bid that came in was a little over the minimum amount. Basically, the bid that came in was fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. The recommendation consistent with pass actions is, is if there's a bid above the tax value, um, to accept the bid and move forward with the sale.
It still goes through the upset bid, correct?
Correct. And there's a map also that I think everybody had.
I drive by this place every day. I wasn't commissioner, I had a made offer on it, probably.
Here right before you get to the, to the, uh, Hattaway, Kiwanis Park.
Look at a wetland here.
I looked at a wetland map today. Um, it's, it's hard, it's hard to say, but there were none under the, is it the DCI layer that's on our GIS, Travis? DCM. Um, on our GIS, there was no wetlands listed on it, but it's hard, you, you can't base that. You have to have a field survey done.
It's spotty and.
How many acres?
It's around a half acre.
Triangle shaped piece of property.
Point five, yep.
He just won't explain. Is that, is that the neighbor? Can't remember. That was my next question. No, it's not. It's not. Never mind. So what can someone do with that half acre?
Well, it's a metal and lot size. What's it done, Travis? Probably residential? Yeah, that section is. Be pretty limited. Could they build a house on it, Travis?
And the lot's not cleared. I mean, it's mostly.
It's a, it's a wooded lot by the, by the areas.
It's still a lot, any way you look at it. It is on, it's on a pretty dang busy road. Yeah.
I mean, yeah. Looks like it's got a driveway tile already on it. But it, it's, as you can see, it's kind of strange and shaky to be challenged to build a house in it.
Okay, we're gonna. Yeah, I mean, if, if, you know, like I said, if we go through the upset bid, somebody else wants it there, so come give us a bid. I'll make a motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote as unanimous. Thank you, folks, and let's move on to the next one.
By the way, having these maps like this, I happen to know that piece of property, but it helped me out immensely on this next one.
Yeah.
I appreciate you, Chairman, asking this to be done.
It's a good question.
Being able to look at it this way versus.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This next one is, um, a request for a, an offer to purchase property on eighteen ten Ruben Road. The minimum bid is the real property, uh, combined value of the land as well as the house is fifteen, I'm sorry, fifty-six thousand nine oh six. There's been a bid put in, uh, for, for that amount that would cover the, the tax value of the house and the property. There was noted by the tax officer, could be some questions or issues regarding access to the dwelling. The dwelling, um, is built, uh, at the back corner of the property.
Doesn't look like it has setbacks.
It does not appear to have setbacks, and in fact, it looks like it encroaches over onto county land that the county already owns over there.
It's just, I mean, I'm assuming it's flooded there.
Um, I'm, I'm not aware of this property flooding, and if it did flood, I would have thought that it would have been, um, demoed. Maybe it's in the works. Do we know anything?
I may be wrong, but I just, that's. Could you, have him come, I can't, yeah, can you come up? Because I definitely have a question about this.
Do you have a picture of it?
Yeah, no, there's a picture of it.
I sent one of the, uh, field assessors out when we were looking at this to determine access one and two, the status of the house, because we had no reports on it from any of the previous owners. Obviously, it's been county owned for a little while. But it's a gated area, couldn't get access, couldn't lay eyes on it, um, but it's in a known damage area where a lot of the lower elevation homes over there did have some substantial flood issues. So the valuation we put on the real property tax-wise is based on an estimate of there's probably some substantial damage.
But we don't know if the house ever flooded?
Not certain, but, um, I mean, I can't say a hundred percent, but I would say, based on the aerial photography that we have and the, the visual when the.
How long have we owned it?
Uh, it's been.
Twenty nineteen is the, the, the date of the deed, four thirty twenty nineteen.
That's right. I think so.
How many acres in that?
Point five, point five nine.
How many?
Point five nine.
Is it landlocked?
Looks to be.
There, it is, the parcel itself is landlocked. There's an easement that runs parallel to that, but we don't know if that's access to that property. And again, my field assessor said that it was gated, so we don't know who owns the gate.
Yes, thank you. There's, it sounds like there's a lot of unknowns about this property. They would probably need to get squared away before we can make a determination as to.
So, how do you access the property? I'm going along with you on this. I, I know where you're going with that. How, I mean, we've got to be able to access our property.
That's kind of the kick question.
It's a half acre. We can get to it through our property, because we own, we own adjacent property.
Yeah, but for someone who.
Right.
Right.
So maybe they've got to buy two lots in order to buy this.
How in the world did it end up like this, though?
Because it's noncompliant with setbacks, I mean, to start with.
I'm not sure. It may be my guess, and Chad's right, I did notice there's a couple other county-owned parcels. It could be that the owner that owned the one just walked away from all of them.
Four of them.
I don't know that to be sure. I don't know. I would be my guess.
If somebody's willing to take the risk of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a huge risk for them, in my opinion.
Well, I don't think that we are in a position to accept that offer without knowing what condition the house is in, what kind of setback issues there's going to be, uh, and also access to the thing.
Looks like a swamp.
Yeah.
I think there's some questions still about this piece of property. Could we get some questions answered on it and then bring it back to the next meeting?
Sure.
I mean, yeah, because if that flooded, then I think that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it probably is. I don't, I don't want to discourage the person, but at the same time, I want a couple of answers on it before I feel comfortable.
Part of that house is not even on this property, is it? It looks like it's on the edge. There's a second structure too. I mean, there's a second roof.
I'm trying to figure out how they build it with the lot, the way it is.
Because they probably have all these front three.
That's right. That's right.
So that's going to help me, so I, are you guys okay with us just?
I think we should learn more, yeah. I agree with you.
Is there some specific things you want us to go look and find? I mean.
Yeah, we need to know the value, the current value of the house, what kind of.
Current status of the structure?
And whether or not it flooded.
Yeah, and, uh, what the condition of the house is. And, and, and somebody's got to be able to get beyond the gate to figure some of this stuff out.
Yeah, that's the part, we don't know, the gate's on an easement road, but we don't know who's owning the gate, and it's not technically a parcel gate. So that's why we didn't, that's why I didn't send my guy any further out into the, to the woods.
Did you say they had it flooded, this lane?
My best guess is that it did, given the looks of the property. I think it did. In the time that I spent down there, I'm fairly confident it was flooded.
And can we see a flood map too, in relation to this? Okay?
And Justin, we mentioned, it looks like there's another roof at the very bottom of the parcel.
Yeah, there's a second.
I think, yeah, it might be a carport or.
Okay, but yeah, but, well, that, I mean, I'm not saying it wouldn't be a carport, but that would be like a long way.
Yeah.
To set up your carport from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like an outbuilding or something.
Right, yeah, just to see what that is.
Or a boat shelter. Out there, it could have been a boat shelter.
All right.
Yeah, we'll do it. I'll see if we can, uh, do a little bushwhacking.
Okay. All right, um. Ms. Moser, would you mind coming into closed session with us for just a few minutes, um, to talk about some things before we talk about, I mean, you can give us an update on the COVID if you want to, but if you don't mind doing that, okay. So at this time, doesn't look like we've got anything, and we do have the Board of Health Annual Report. Would you like to come on up and handle that?
You're going to go in as the Board of Health?
Yeah, we probably need to on this one, thank you. We are now sitting as the Board of Health.
Just wanted to kind of give an update then for our two thousand and twenty, um, annual report and point out a few things. It's all been in your packet, so if you've got any questions, feel free to ask me. And, um, we really tried to denote at the bottom of that first page as to whether or not our numbers were impacted because of the pandemic or, um, they were related to testing or, um, staffing shortage, which seems to be, um, pretty common. We're still low on nurses, but, um, under adult health, you can see that we had quite a few more visits than two thousand and nineteen. And that, in that is the testing that we did with COVID during that time, and, um, so with the child health numbers. Then, of course, our dental and our mobile dental units, their numbers were down. The mobile dental had closed because schools were closed, and, um, so they were closed from March until July. And then, um, the dental clinic was closed for a certain amount of time because that was the recommendation from the American Dental Association and the CDC until we were able to operate, uh, with extra precautions. Immunizations, regular immunizations were down. We did give a few more flu shots, and I'm not going to go into all of it because it's pretty self-explanatory. Our septic tanks, those applications still continue to roll in. Environmental health was still busy though, because a lot of times they made visits specifically for COVID and those who might not be wearing a mask, but then we also have to remember that a lot of the restaurants were shut down for a while and were most likely doing takeout or, or closed. So, we were also down when it came to adoptions of, really, we were low on cats and dogs last year because, um, we had a lot of people that were able to stay home so they could take care of their pets and the pets they adopted, they were able to spend time and train them, and, um, so we didn't have a lot of back and forth with pets in two thousand and twenty. Then, of course, um, the breakdown of finances for, um, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty budget as far as where the majority of our expenditures were, we're talking about mostly medical and dental. And then, um, majority of our revenues, fifty-two percent were not county, forty-eight percent were county revenues. And, um, the state amount of twenty-one percent revenues, I'm sure that captured a lot of COVID money. We have carried quite a bit over into this fiscal year, but I'm sure that it, it carried, um, over, I mean, we used quite a bit. I, I also want to point out with this report and just remind everybody that while we were in the midst of a pandemic, we were also trying to run a health department. So our doors didn't shut because of that. We, our staff couldn't work from home. Our staff had to be there to see patients. And so I, I'm really very proud of, of even these numbers when you consider the overall situation and, um, all the other things that they had to do during this time. So, did you all have any questions about that report?
That's good.
Any questions?
It's a good report. Appreciate it.
As far as the COVID report, there for the longest time, um, I was trying to update you at least every Friday or so with numbers. And I thought, now that we've seen such, um, an increase in COVID numbers, that you might be interested to see where Pender is as compared to, um, our surrounding counties. And also, um, I wanted to share the fact that, you know, we still remain one of the lowest in our surrounding counties when it comes to deaths, and also for cases. I don't know how long that will last. We have had some, um, recent deaths of individuals that were younger than sixty that have died due to COVID. The, we have nineteen in the hospital right now. The hospital's having a really hard time. They, um, are not doing any elective surgery. They, um, are pretty full. They're, they've converted some of their recovery rooms to COVID rooms. They're, um, doing some environmental upfits to one floor to where they can have, um. They're, um, doing some environmental upfits to one floor to where they can have, um, reverse isolation rooms for, for COVID patients. So, they're as high with their, um, admissions as they have been since back in January. So, we also, our numbers are running as high as the county was in January as well.
Was January the peak?
Mm-hmm. For, yeah, for most everybody it was. Um, we are averaging about forty new cases a day. And, um, the schools, of course, have quite a few students out. And, um, we anticipate that that will continue to keep us busy. Most cases, though, are going to be in that twenty-five to forty-nine year old range. And, um, fortunately, we're averaging about a hundred and fifty to two hundred people every week to come in for a COVID vaccine that have been vaccine hesitant before. So that's really a good thing, that people are starting to change their mind and want to be vaccinated. The booster that was announced on Friday is, is supposed to be for only those that are moderate to severely immunocompromised. And I've given you some examples of what that would involve. It involves people that, um, have cancer, going through chemotherapy, um, your organ transplants, stem transplant, stem cell transplants, advanced or untreated HIV, high dose corticosteroid treatment with IV infusions. And, um, it's really been left to people to self-attest that they fit one of these categories. We have not had anybody today, um, come in. We talked this weekend, not knowing, uh, just what might hit our door today. What hit our door were over fifty people wanting to be tested for COVID instead. But, um, there's not a standing order from the state yet for us to administer this vaccine. I, I expected it would have been out already. And, um, so we are waiting on that before we would give a booster dose. Mm-hmm.
A couple of questions. The, the booster dose, does it apply to, are you stating like as we did the Moderna? Or is this a booster for all manufacturers or?
It's booster for Moderna and Pfizer only, not changing any.
And the other two questions I had were, um, for, you know, for the hospital, um, recovery time and, um, death rate. Is recovery time quicker than before in January? Is the death rate lower than January or higher?
Ninety percent, ninety percent of those that are in the hospital right now are unvaccinated. Those that are in the hospital and have been vaccinated are typically going to be those with high-risk health conditions as to why they're in there. But we have had some breakthrough cases, and I've said this last time, we're going to because it's not a hundred percent effective vaccine. But the individuals that are not going to the hospital that have breakthrough do have milder symptoms. And that is the main thing, is that it is milder symptoms and fewer hospitalizations and, uh, fewer deaths.
But I, what I was, what I was getting at was length of stay in the hospital. Is that about the same, or is it any better?
It's probably worse. Um, we still run into the same problem that by the time individuals hit the ER, they are so, so very sick.
And you said ninety percent of them are.
Are unvaccinated.
Yeah.
Um, surrounding counties with hospitals would love to transfer patients into New Hanover, and there are just no beds. There are some, some treatments now, and, um, New Hanover is using those with the monoclonal antibody treatments. And, um, I don't know how well that's going. Uh, we do have a call tomorrow, and I'll probably learn something about that.
Is there a time duration between the initial second dose of, of the vaccine and the booster? Uh, recommended time duration, is it six months? Is it eight months? What?
No, um, two weeks after the second one. Ideally, we'd wait, like for you to wait four, because, but, no, there is no time.
I would think that there would be some effective time.
Oh, effectiveness?
Yeah, for the, for, for the first two.
Right.
With Moderna, you take two doses, two doses.
Right.
And then I would think that you could go six months before you would need the booster.
Well, um.
Is there a recommendation around that?
The CDC is not saying that. Right now, those who receive, receive two doses of Moderna and are fully vaccinated after six months, they're showing about a seventy-six percent effective rate.
Still.
Still. Pfizer is down to about forty-three percent effective rate. So, um, right now, I, I guess, I don't, I don't know what the CDC's, CDC's going to plan to do, but they still are saying that the average vaccinated individual shouldn't need a booster. And I think they're trying to see where the research leads because we certainly don't have enough information on that. And then also hoping that more people will become vaccinated and we won't be facing this.
Yeah.
Ms. Moser, I have a question. There's, these figures, um, by county, and cases by county, and deaths by county. What time period are we referring to here?
Since the very beginning.
Since the very beginning. Okay. Um, do you have any information or has there been any breakdown between when this variant, the Delta variant, kicked back in on the death rates?
No, that is not out there because they didn't always stereotype every, every case until recently.
Okay, all right. But by saying Delta variant, I meant when the surge came back up?
Surge came up.
So, do we have any breakdown of, of deaths after we, uh, began a robust vaccination?
We've had three, we've had three deaths already in the last couple of months.
Okay. Do you know, or are they tracking, uh, the, the, uh, deaths of people whether they were vaccinated?
Yes, they are tracking that. Yes.
Are we finding that there are, um, severe cases leading to death of vaccinated people who are not otherwise immune compromised?
I can't answer that. I just know that those in the hospital right now that have been vaccinated have had underlying conditions.
The reason I ask, because when I've been asked about the vaccine, I say, well, you might still get sick, but at least you won't die.
I think you can still say that. The odds are in your favor.
Thank you. And you may say that again.
Do we have any Delta on Carson County yet?
Everything is Delta, pretty much. Everything out there is Delta right now.
Is there really much difference in that Delta and the regular?
It's as contagious as chickenpox, so it's much more virulent. Um, and we do have a lot of the younger kids getting it now that didn't usually in, in the previous months get COVID. Um, we still are seeing it even down to six months of age that are, are getting COVID. But most children, um, still have mild, mild symptoms. Um, or, or asymptomatic, which a lot of times can pose a problem at, at school because the child doesn't seem sick and they really are contagious. So, it's, it's a fine balance there with, um, with the schools and, and trying to.
Everyone I know of that died from it or had a pre-existing condition of something else going on too, I mean. Um, just from the.
Yeah.
I guess it's, have weakness, um, resistance is just weak to fight it probably.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Most of the time, that's the case. It's a little scary. I just tell everybody to remember the three W's, and we've said that from the beginning and, you know, making sure they practice good hand washing. One of the, um, items on the consent agenda had to do with approval of, um, some additional funds that are coming from the state, a hundred and fifteen thousand, which I don't know what they were thinking about when they did this. Um, I'll say that because every county has, uh, been allocated a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to hire a public health nurse for a year. And, um, they are to be a liaison with the schools. And that would be great for us, um, to take some of that pressure off of staff. It's just that, you know, we're already short nurses. Most counties are having a hard time getting nurses. And, um, it's very possible that there'll be a lot of counties, including us, that'll have to send the money back. We'll see if we can't recruit, but it's a one-year position, and I don't know how many people want, want to take that on.
Well, but unless things change, there would be some availability after that for positions that we don't have nurses in right now.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, if they chose to stay and they work out, and they chose to stay, there, there are open nurse positions right now.
Yeah. Yeah.
About everybody's got open nurse positions right now.
Yeah, they do. Everybody's hurting, so. Um, we'll try and recruit. We'll see where we get with it. But, that's it. Please know that, um, you can call me or email me anytime with questions. Oh, one other thing about the deaths for Pender, when we look at the seventy-four deaths, we need to remember that seventeen of those were in the prison. So honestly, when we, we take that in to consideration, we have the lowest number of deaths, at least right now, um, for COVID of any of the surrounding counties. And, um, hats off to staff that have worked really hard trying to get some contact tracing and getting these people identified and trying to get them to stay home.
No, no.
Yeah, but since you mentioned that, that it's a prison, prison has their own medical people.
Absolutely.
They have all that on their own. We are, no, um, we couldn't help them.
I had staff call them, uh, our prison last week, mostly because I wanted to know, the two prisons in, uh, Columbus County have outbreaks going on right now. And my concern was, are, are they back to, uh, transferring inmates in and out? And, um, I've been told that they're very, um, sporadic when it comes to transfers. And I also wanted to know if they were vaccinating any inmates because they made a big push when vaccine first came out. And they are offering the vaccine to offenders. Whether they're taking it or not, I don't know, but they are offering it.
So, it's not just that we are less than the surrounding counties. We are significantly less, by about a third.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Brunswick's a hundred and sixty-nine deaths, Columbus a hundred and sixty-two, Dup, uh, Duplin a hundred and forty-six, New Hanover a hundred and eighty-three. Which of these counties have prisons and are, are we tracking these numbers for their prisons this way?
Columbus has prisons. I don't know. Does Sampson have one? Um.
Sampson does. Wilmington's got one.
That's right. So I don't know how many of those were prisoners.
But, but we are signif, our numbers are significantly less.
Yes, and, um, I cannot help but say that that's not from a lack of effort on our staff.
And thank you for that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let your staff know how much we appreciate what they do.
It certainly puts it in perspective when you see what's going on around you.
But another question that I had, just briefly, it talking about, um, obtaining, uh, nursing personnel. Is there any possibility of, of contracting for nurses, for traveling nurses? And I know it would be expensive, but if we get in a crisis, one, could we, um, retain contract, uh, personnel? And two, if we do, would that cost be supplemented by the state?
It would not be supplemented. We would use COVID dollars, obviously, the one hundred and fifteen thousand, because it certainly is more than the salary and fringe. Um, and there are very limited reasons you can use it. The only other thing is travel, uh, professional development and a computer.
So, that's an interesting point she brought up during this, what we're going through right now with COVID. Do you think there might be nurses out there that would see a contracted position more attractive than employment?
I don't know.
Maybe retired, they don't want full-time?
Well, I'm thinking there are companies that provide contract nursing services. And if we get in a crunch, we have that, um, asset available, at least checking into it rather than hiring full-time.
Typically, you're looking at a very, very high administrative fee on top of that.
But when push comes to shove, if we need them, we, we.
We can try. Um, I wouldn't hold my breath on it because it's like Commissioner Williams said, it is so hard to find nurses anywhere right now. Everybody's hurting.
Sure. Just like teachers we were talking about for the last few years, but, you know, nurses just are, are overworked right now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Um, anything for social services? Okay. Items from the county attorney?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, uh, closed session under item three, attorney-client, and, uh, item five, acquisition real property. Anything else?
Discussion that I wanted to have.
Um, personnel, personnel would be item six.
That was something like bringing Ms. Moser in.
Yes, no, but that would go into attorney-client with the potential.
Okay, all right.
So, not personnel?
Unless, you have personnel?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, three, five, six, I got you.
All right. You got anything?
No, uh, Ms. Chairman, I, I just wanted to reiterate the, uh, comments earlier regarding Nancy and, and thank Nancy personally for her efforts to, to, um, in the transition between Melissa and Tara and for help in getting Tara acclimated. Tara's, um, hit the ground running. It's been a quick study, so transition was very smooth and just want to thank Nancy. And that's all I have.
Doug?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to let the board know that we received approval from the Department of the Interior by way of the National Park Service on a request for waiver of retroactivity on the Morton property. Uh, this allows us to apply the funds that were recently used to acquire that property as part of the Pender County's match for future land and water conservation fund grant applications until September thirtieth of next year. So, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we.
We just get credit.
Correct. It doesn't mean that we're, it doesn't imply that this project will automatically be approved, though.
Yeah.
LWCF, but just wanted to.
That's, that's checking the box on it, though.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
Um, a couple of things. Uh, last week, we had the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, um, conference, uh, in New Hanover County. New Hanover County hosted. The convention center was fantastic. What a wonderful facility to have these kind of events. I was so proud. And New Hanover County did a really good job of, of making welcome and, and, uh, providing space for this wonderful, uh, group and, and this, uh, these, uh, three days of conferences. And, you know, our, uh, county commissioner from neighboring county from Brunswick, Frank Williams, uh, has been, um, elected, uh, the new president for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. So, I'm very proud of him for that. Hopefully tomorrow, I will be in Raleigh with the folks from New Hanover County, Mayor Sappo, and some of his staff regarding resilience funding, uh, and hoping to get some of that, uh, funding funneled here to Pender County. Um, we had conversations at our last meeting about the tier system and how it affects counties' abilities and the tier system ranking, uh, being related to counties that are, you know, in distress and our ability to receive funding for our citizens. Walked in this evening and, uh, staff has had conversations with our state representative, Carson. with our state representative, Carson Smith, who has a bill that he is assisting in promoting to reevaluate these criteria. Um, in, in my studies on the issue, uh, in twenty-eighteen, there was some adjustment variables that were, are no longer being considered that have to do with population density and poverty levels that would greatly assist, uh, counties with pockets, uh, such as Pender County, uh, which have rural, uh, low-density areas with low employment and, and high, um, poverty rates. So, you know, we're, we're not the only county that has this situation. I mean, there are other counties, like Transylvania, up in the mountains, I mean, other counties that have little pockets of residential. And I talked to a commissioner from, uh, it will remain unnamed, but he said that they had a rural, poverty-stricken, very sparsely populated county, and they had one, one gated community of retirees move in and it just shot them out of tier one up into tier two. So, you know, it's very fragile and it's really, for the most part, out of our control. Um, the North Carolina Department of Commerce makes those adjustments and they have a very formulated view. So, I'm hoping that our folks in Raleigh, um, can get something done for us, give us some relief. That's all.
I got an email and a copy, I think all of y'all will reply, they had to deal with the tier. It was just today, so...
Girl, we've been dealing with tier.
Long time.
Yeah, we put it on our list of things that we'd like help from our state representatives for many, many years now. I'm glad to hear that it's filtering up. I'm not, I, I, hopefully it gets enough support to make some significant changes so that we don't have some of this posturing going on and people reusing the system to get them into a tier that they should actually be in a different tier. Um, and that's forcing us to be tier three, which significantly hurts us from grant applications and other financial considerations for, for our citizens, so...
And it just doesn't make sense that, that, that by statute, a certain percentage of each of our counties, forty have to be tier one, forty have to be tier, and twenty have to be tier three. And, and I've had conversations about Brunswick and New Hanover and the criteria that was used and, and their sales tax reporting was about a month late, which caused them to be kicked over into another tier. To, to, uh, to other counties detriment, I might add, so, I don't expect them to stay at tier two.
When I saw that, I just, I was like, it had to be a typo.
And, and they were, they were surprised as, as we all are, but, you know, to their credit.
Yeah, but it... By chang- by, by having the criteria that they have, and then you mentioned the numbers, you gotta have forty and twenty or whatever. It's like it's taking the, the credibility from the criteria to a quota system only.
That's exactly what it looks like, yes, sir, it is.
So the numbers are skewed and, and so that's the other thing that hurts us.
Yep, because for one county to be dropped by need, another county has to be raised and then precluded from, you know...
That's why we're there.
It's crazy.
That's why we're there.
This thing has to grow legs and it has to be done at the state capitol.
Yep. It does.
It was good to see, uh, good to have my people come out for the courthouse dedication, uh, in the rain, but, uh, the regular crowd there and it was a good event. Appreciate what Tammy did and getting all the other...
Thank you, staff. It, you really worked hard and I was really proud, uh, that we were able to get that many people, like you say, in that kind of weather, so it, it really was a nice event.
Thank y'all for attending.
I don't have anything, I'm just coming off vacation and, um, really happy that Fred chose a path into the golf and it looks like Grace is gonna go into the golf, so, uh...
I thought you were talking about Commissioner McColl.
I think he did, too. I wasn't sure, but I forgot. I was kinda wondering where you were going with that, too.
I mean, I don't wanna wish anything bad on anybody, but, um, we really would, it would be nice to get through season without a significant...
That's kinda like some of the guys, um, talking about having to outrun the bear. He said, no, I just have to outrun you. Said, I don't want anything bad on those folks, but, you know, hey, I'm gonna smile if it doesn't hit us.
I just got a, I just got a couple of things, just to expand on what Commissioner Newton was talking about. Uh, my date Saturday night, I did go to the dinner, I didn't, I couldn't attend a conference, I went Saturday. My date was former representative justice, former county commissioner, she's, she knows, uh, he's, you know, he's a, he's a, an ally of ours and now he's president of the NCACC. So that's a, you know, Frank's, Frank Williams has worked, you worked with, with Commissioner Newton. You know, Brunswick County has been a good ally of ours for the future water supply and expansion of the water line and things. And, uh, and so, uh, so I was, I was honored to go with her and then would sit with him and his, got to sit with Congressman Rousher, talk about a few things, too. He was, he was at one of those tables and, uh, it was a good turnout. And, uh, yeah, it was, uh, the facility, the facility was nice and, uh, yeah, there's, uh, a lot going on downtown, buddy, I'll tell you that.
And, and Carolyn Justice is a Hall of Famer.
Yeah.
And there are very many of those in that organization, so, um, she is a dignitary in that organization still in her own right, so...
Um, what I wanted to bring up, I, I talked to Tammy about this a little bit last week, um, about, and we actually, uh, did a resolution supporting the registered family, they do the Christmas lights in, in Surf City. You know, but it's, it's on Highway seventeen and the traffic can get pretty thick. You know, all these thousands of people come to see the lights. They're having, uh, they're having some issues because of some complaints, uh, by DOT to meet a lot of certain criterion demands to manage traffic flow. You gotta understand, these folks, there's no admission, you bring in toys for tots and that's pretty much, you know, all that, that they ask that you do. Um, they're investigating some things on their end. Um, but I don't know if somehow we could send a letter or a resolution of support for, to try to work with DOT, maybe, maybe our sheriff could loan out, you know, we've got those two portable speed limit things, you know, how could, how could we help or help coordinate or, or ask our representatives to ask DOT to... I mean, it's, it's an important, I mean, it's on national TV, you know, made the, you know, it's a, it helps tourism, it helps with promote Christmas at a time of year, there's thousands and thousands of people that come here. They don't, they come here from New Hanover, they come here from other counties. Um, I sure would hate to see it go, have to go because of liability reasons. I mean, I, I think the way, the way I'm seeing it, and I've, I've talked to, to Mike a little bit, I think that there's, it should, they'll probably have money raised to buy the, you know, the liability insurance involved there. But it's still, logistically, traffic control can be, you know, quite challenging, so if... If we could just ask and maybe somehow reach out to our representatives, maybe reach out to the sheriff and, and just the highway patrol, you know, it would be, it's only in the evenings, it's only at night, but it is for quite a few nights. I'd like to try to help them somehow, to see if there's somehow we can get everybody to work together. I know, sir, I know the county of Surf City wants to do it, too. But, you know, technically that's in their city limits, but, yeah, maybe we can figure out something. I'd like us to explore it anyway.
Well, maybe we could come up with some kind of resolution that all the commissioners can agree to. And, uh, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if it's something that's helpful.
I don't know what the answer is, you know, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I tend to talk to Sheriff Cutler and we'll see.
We wanna be, if there's anything we can do to help remedy things, we'd like, well, we, we'd like to be a part of that, so...
All right, well, I just wanted, wanted you guys, I didn't know he was already gonna post on one of the things that he'd already, that I'd reached out to him, 'cause I, I wanted to talk to y'all first. But, so if you hear anything, I'm gonna start talking.
When I first, when I first saw this the other day, the emails on that, I figured there were, we were probably gonna weigh in a little bit.
Yeah. So, hopefully we can help, I don't wanna step on Surf City's toes, but I think they could...
Well, anything we're gonna help Surf City with along that line, it's, it means a lot to us, that's a, that's a big event, you know, so...
It's huge.
Is that all you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I, I'm glad you brought up the, um, the, the get-together at the courthouse the other day. I thought it was a nice event, it went well, and I was, it didn't last too long. But, uh, it was a nice crowd to be so, the weather to be so bad, you know, so...
Torn down rain, yeah.
You thought, you were just barely made it in the door, didn't you?
I tell you what, well, one thing that should have lasted an hour, people will hag over a dollar right down to the grand. I was so embarrassed I had to come in there at four-thirty, but I was gonna come in there and if it was five minutes till I was gonna show up.
Well, Tammy...
And Tammy, thank you for being, uh, there to cover me for that. I appreciate it so much.
It, it turned out well, staff did a good job and, uh...
And thank Gary Traywick for...
Oh, I wanted to mention that, too. That was, that was great.
Wasn't it interesting?
I was not even expecting that. And so when they came up and started talking about it, Mr. Pollak came up and started talking about it, I was, I was kinda, I'm, I, I wasn't real sure what he was talking about to begin with, 'cause he was kinda excited about it.
No, that was a write-up, I'm, I'm talking about the historical paper that Judge Traywick had prepared.
Oh, no, 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 I'm talking about what, what the, the Biberstein family had provided for us, yes. That was nice.
That was a very nice surprise.
It was a good gesture.
Yes, it was.
And, uh, and I appreciated it and, uh, it, for those that may not know what I'm talking about, it's the, the Irish State?
It's Irish State Magazine.
Back, what, thirty-six? Yeah, they had a picture of our courthouse on it and a write-up in the magazine about our courthouse, which had not even been built at the time, but they, I guess they had an architectural drawing of the courthouse.
They had a representative attend that last restoration meeting and, uh, they had dinner on the grounds and things like that, and then they had a nice write-up in the paper. And, uh, Attorney Rick Biberstein had had that magazine framed on his office wall and his, his widow, Mrs. Carolyn Biberstein, uh, donated it to the courthouse. And that was really special.
Yeah, it was. Anyhow, um, with all that being said, I guess we can entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Ms. Chairman, I move to go in closed session for item number three, attorney-client privilege, item five, acquisition real property, and item six, personnel.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
At this time, see, are we missing the Commissioner?
Mr. McCoy.
Okay.
He was right behind me.
Yeah, he'll be here in just a moment. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Do we need to swear any people in?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, all right, okay. So, we'll go ahead and get started. Mr. McCoy will be on in here in just a minute. So, Mr. Henley?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. This presentation's gonna be handled by Gideon Smith, Senior Farmer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This application before you tonight is a general use rezoning request for one tract of land from the RA, Rural Agricultural Zone District, to the RP, Residential Performance Zoning District. Site's located on the western side of US Highway seventeen, immediately across from Union Bethel Road and the Topsail Township. To give you a little better idea of its location, Penner Pine and Slupe Point Road are about a half mile north of the site. Details are included in your report tonight. If you would like, you know, we can go through, you know, more detail than you'd like. I see that we have a few members of the public in the audience, but kind of to begin with, we are, staff is, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on one second. How many signups do we have?
Uh, three, Ms. Chairman.
Who are they?
Uh, well, the two applicants that signed up, I'm not sure if they both speak, but they're both signed up, and then Kevin Pitts.
Kevin Pitts? Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, well, I really will look to the board whether or not you'd like a detailed analysis or just kind of your spark notes of this, or if you want me to proceed, you tell me how you'd like to move forward.
I think you should proceed with the details. We don't need it word for word, but...
Okay, that's my opinion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So, subject property, it's about one acre in size. In the area, there are some general business zone properties, but other than that, it's generally residential performance and RA. Union Bethel Church is right across the street, shown in blue right there, so...
How large is this parcel, and is all of the parcel involved in this proceeding?
So, the parcel itself in question tonight is point nine seven acres. On the screen, it's shown in blue.
There was some reference to the front half of the parcel. How large and what is the distinction between the two areas?
Right, so, when this application was originally submitted, it included this rear parcel as point nine seven acres, and then the front parcel, which is zone general business, and I think it's about one point one two acres, so it's very small, but at the planning board, it was part of the application, but prior to that hearing, there was some concerns about neighboring property and some ownership questions about that front parcel, so the applicant decided to remove that front parcel from consideration, so now that's why tonight, for the commissioners, we have this application of point nine seven acres being requested to go from RA to RP.
And that, that front parcel is GB now, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
One question. When I read this, access would, I assume, come through that front parcel that we just got through discussing?
Yeah, at this time, you know, I'm not aware of legal access, but that would be, you know, determined if this were to be approved tonight, you know, legal access would have to be established, so whether or not this front parcel comes forward, you know, the property owners will have to, you know, obtain legal access before developing the subject property.
Okay, thanks.
So, are we premature in approving this landlot parcel without them having definitive ownership from the first part, or does that have any impact?
I don't think it necessarily has total impact, because if they want to develop the property, if it's rezoned, part of the process is to make sure that legal access is provided, so really what you're, tonight, is just a general use rezoning to change the zoning, to allow for any allowable use within the RP district, you know, but part of development is obtaining legal access and ensuring that a property owner has access to get to their site prior to development.
But isn't part of your analysis and recommendation based upon traffic impact, and I know it doesn't, because of the density of development in this particular parcel, it has no impact on our consideration where they access this parcel from?
I would, you know, generally, you know, access is going to be along seventeen in the general vicinity. It will depend on the property owners and their ability to establish an easement, whether or not it's through this front parcel that was removed from the application, or if they have to obtain legal access from another avenue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You, uh, so, what I think I'm hearing is, in order to move forward after the zoning, rezoning, before development, legal access will have to be as part of the conditions for further development. It'll have to be shown.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that wicket was...
And it would be looked at.
Because I've read the narrative, and it talks vaguely about it, so I'm in there, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it was up in the air. I wasn't sure if we were being premature.
I just didn't know if it went through that first parcel, but...
Well, the only thing that consoled me about that was that the density wasn't gonna be such that it would have to have a DOT review.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, if this were approved, you know, for, two homes would be allowed to be constructed out there, so because it's a smaller development, only two units, it would go through the building permit review process. Through that process, we would, you know, verify legal access, and, you know, DOT would not be involved in this review, just based on the scope of it.
Understood.
Thank you.
But because this, so, being that it's a general use rezon, and you know, all uses that are permitted in the RP district would be allowed, you know, generally, that is your single-family houses, your duplexes, your manufactured homes, but the ordinance does allow for, you know, non-residential uses to be permitted in RP district, provided they go through the proper process, such as the special use permit. So, just so you're aware, if approved tonight, all residential performance uses would be allowed on-site, but if they were, if they were developed non-residentially, then it would have to go through possibly another public hearing, and then the technical review committee to ensure compliance with their standards. As we're talking, access is along seventeen. Right now, it's a little unclear, you know, where that access will be, just like we're talking, but right now, you would be able to take a right in to the site if you were traveling kind of towards Hampstead, and then take a right out to, you know, head towards Hampstead Town Center. You know, again, it's unclear, based on the design of seventeen, the super street design, if folks travel, trying to travel, go to Topsail Island, you know, they may have to take a right out of the site, come up to Slupe Point Loop, do a U-turn, and then travel, you know, and it really just kind of depends on how the site is developed, and we don't have a plan at this point, based on the type of rezoning, it is... And also, you know, because we don't have a plan at the time, we are unable to evaluate whether or not a traffic impact analysis is required, but our threshold is a hundred peak hour trips, and it's unlikely that, you know, a development on-site would, you know, produce a hundred trips that require traffic impact analysis.
Unless they put some kind of business on it.
That's correct, which would be reviewed through a special use permit, and traffic impacts would be evaluated at that time.
And then it would be significant how they access that property.
If it were developed commercially, I think there would be a whole set of different questions that would have to be asked, rather than...
Again, my question is, are we being premature?
I will defer to the board.
Because there's no designation or intent stated as to what they're gonna do with this property.
And due to, due to the type of application they chose to pursue.
Preserve any option, I understand that.
Yes, ma'am. But staff did evaluate traffic, environmental impacts, you know, we evaluate our typical items that we review for every proposal.
Or everything but a business.
Yeah, but Jackie, I think in order to do that, they'll have to get an SUP, and by the time, it'll, it'll force that other...
You have to know exactly what it is.
They'll have to do it then.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
If y'all are comfortable with it.
Yeah.
But overall, you know, it is, here's some site pictures, taking, you know, looking at seventeen, here's a site looking directly from seventeen, here's a picture taken from Union Bethel Church, looking directly across the site, it's wooded, undeveloped, but, you know, based on comprehensive plan analysis, it is consistent, based on the existing development pattern in the area, and then it's also consistent with the recommended densities for this future land use place type, or future land use classification. Staff recommends approval based on its consistency with the plan, planning board...
And the planning board unanimously approved this, right?
They vote...
With no, no further conditions, correct?
There were no conditions placed on it.
Right, and this has no wetlands on it, right?
There are no wetlands on-site.
Okay, cool.
At least based on our data. So, planning board considered it at the July meeting, voted five to five oh to recommend approval, based on its consistency with the, with the comprehensive plan, and they voted that their action was reasonable in public interest. So, staff's here for questions, the applicant's here, you know, we can discuss further if you'd like, but with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, let's, let's move on to the signups.
Sonia Edens?
I don't have anything to say unless the board has any questions for us.
Okay.
Um, and I'll take it that you're speaking for Randall as well. So, Kevin Pitts, and he wisely nods.
Come on, come on up to the podium.
And introduce yourself, sir, if you would.
Hi, my name is Kevin Pitts, and I'm coming representing my parents. My mother's the one who owns a part of the property. That will be directly affected by this change. I do have some concerns. I think the easement issues are significant, thank you, Mrs. Newton. I think it would be premature to just blindly approve this, because it seems like the application was done that was purposeful, so they did not have to declare what they're gonna use the property for, and then it would be... I think we have no general objections. What we need as a community is clarity. A lot of this property has been owned by my family for generations. The rest of my family is here, my grandfather just died a couple years ago, a hundred and two, and they worked hard for this, and we do not want to be moved around and have decisions made for us prematurely, without there be some transparency and clarity in these decisions. In addition to that, my family used to live on that property, and they were already moved once with the widening of the roads. once with the widening of the roads, and we understand that. And while it seems now that would be an easy decision to make, because the change would be consistent with the property as is, we don't know what the ultimate plan is. That community is thriving, it's growing exponentially, and being that you're the county seat, there has to be significant plans based on what's happening in Hampstead, and that this is a direct route onto Surf City and Topsail Beach. There's a business opportunity, and there are all these things that we are part of, and we have representation, and we just want to make sure there's clarity and there's understanding before we allow this. Last thing I'll say, when we were forced to move, when my parents, actually, it was my great-aunt that was forced to move away from this right on the road, they purchased a property right down Union Bethel Road. In this particular community, easements are very, very important, and she was forced to suffer with land use through a landlocked property, and the people that were behind them caused havoc and chaos, and now that property is in disrepair. So, we don't want to see things in the community happen without there being a community voice, and for us knowing exactly what's going on within reason, and I just feel that we don't have enough information to approve it at this time.
Mr. Chairman, may I address one issue raised by Mr. Pitts? Mr. Pitts, what has been applied for is a general use rezoning.
I understand.
And, but what that means is, and Mr. Ms. Edens may or may not have a drawn-up plan, they're, you know, that's part of what they do, so they may well have something, but it cannot be considered in a general use rezoning what their current plans for the property are.
I understand that.
Okay, all right, I just want to be sure you did, because I mean, that's a.
Understanding the whole process.
Right, that is, and part of that is, because they could sell it tomorrow, and somebody else could have a different plan, and use it for anything that would be allowed. Now, it's the residential zone is what they're requesting a rezoning to, so I just want to be sure you're aware of that. Again, I'm not, they're not trying to hide the ball on anything, because if they started to talk about, here's what we want to do with this property, I'd say, I'm sorry, you can't, the board can't consider that, and that, we, that's the way we always do it, you know, and the board's heard me say that countless times, that's the way it's, it's gotta be on a general use rezoning, and I just wanted you and your family to understand that. It's not a, there's not anything different, and there's not anything that the Edens aren't providing that they should be providing, because if, if they said, here's our plan, we'd have to say, well, that doesn't, it doesn't matter what you say your plan is now, because you can then do whatever you're allowed to do in a residential zone.
With all due respect, I do understand that, I understand the development process.
Yes, sir, no, okay.
And thank you for that clarity.
Yes, sir.
We understand what they can and cannot do here, but what we are asking for is a voice, because what they do on their property directly affects what happens to us, and you and your neighborhood would be very concerned about anyone who you do not know coming in and developing, without having some type of understanding what's going on. We're just asking for clarity, transparency, transparency, and fairness.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you so much for your time.
That's the only signups we got? Okay. Will? Does anyone have any questions for staff?
No, sir.
Were you ready to make a motion?
Close the public hearing.
Okay. We'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval, as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? The vote is four to one. Thank you, folks.
All right, if we want to address, we're not gonna be done.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess we need to tonight.
Are we gonna try to add that to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll.
So, I make a motion that we, coming out of closed session, that we add an item that was recommended out of the Health Department to the agenda for consideration tonight.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda as a result of the presentation from our Health Department tonight.
In the earlier session of our meeting this afternoon.
Right, right. So, all those in favor? The vote is unanimous, which is required. Now, we'll talk about the, the actual language we need for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After consulting and discussions with the Health Director, in light of recent increase in COVID cases and hospitalizations, we are requesting the board consider a mask mandate for all unvaccinated employees, as well as a mandate for the public entering our buildings, employees obviously being those that are employed by the county during work hours or in fulfillment of their work obligations. Part of it would be the requirement to provide proof of vaccination in order to not be required, be subject to that requirement of a mask.
So, let me understand this. We're gonna require, we're gonna mandate masks, except for the exemption where you're vaccinated and provide proof of that vaccination through some form.
Correct, which, which in, the Health Department can get a list of employees.
That's right.
That have been vaccinated, so it's not like they're gonna have to show it at work every day, and show us your papers.
That's right.
That kind of thing. And then, if they're interacting, their job makes them interact with the public, all of county property. Now, for instance, you got an inspector out inspecting a piece of property, and there's no one else on the job, or he's not working, or she is not working in close proximity to anyone else, then that would be kind of silly for them to have a mask on, especially in the heat. So, I mean, there's, this is, you know, trying to have some common sense about this, but we're under a lot of pressure to have something, you know, and not everybody's gonna want to get vaccinated, where this is not a mandate, this is not making people get vaccinated, you know.
But we also, as a governmental body, have a duty to our citizens to continue to provide continuity and service, and, you know, in surrounding counties, there has been a countywide mandate that all employees wear a mask. We're not going that far yet. If you have chosen to be vaccinated and protect yourself and others, then we're not gonna require you to wear a mask, is what I understand the recommendation was.
That's correct.
Yes, ma'am.
But although we already have information from the state database as to who is vaccinated, if there's a question, an employee could be asked to provide proof of their vaccination if it's not otherwise accessible to us. Also, if the public wants to come in to do county business, they also should be given an option. If they're vaccinated, they shouldn't have to wear a mask, but if they're not vaccinated, that they should wear masks. And, you know, this is just for the protection of our employees, it's for the protection of the citizens, so I don't know how the public aspect would work, people coming into public facilities, but as to our employees, you know, I think that I could very much support, if you have not been vaccinated, that you, you be required to wear a mask. I don't have a problem with it.
I like things simple, so what it, what it means for me is that whether your staff or people coming into the county offices, you're going, is, we're gonna have a mandate, you have to wear a mask. If you choose not to wear a mask, the only exemption would be, you would have to show proof that you've been vaccinated, and that will give you an exemption to the mask. Our employees, we will know who has and has not been vaccinated, but their option, they can wear a mask if they've been vaccinated. It's their option, if they don't want to be, if they don't want to wear a mask, they've just got to show proof of vaccination.
Consider, consider this the motion for all that we've just discussed.
Right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, but, but.
Not too late.
This needs to be rolled out in an appropriate manner through the departments for governmental employees.
Yep.
Robert News Media.
We have all.